Yes?
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Whoops, it's on. There we go. All right, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll? Ms. Segwin? Here. Ms. Christoffin?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Yeah.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Okay, if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will do our introductions here. We have Mr. Brent Parker down to my right, Mr. Mike Gebhardt to my immediate right, Vice President Annie Karstoffen to my left, Len Hauser, board member, and Schloss Superintendent, and Colleen Ahold, Treasurer. Okay, moving along. We are going to move on to visitor comments. The school board encourages and appreciates citizen interest in meetings of the Board of Education. Normally, the Board will meet twice during the month and will make accommodations to allow public participations. Persons wishing to address the Board for up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet indicating the topic they wish to address or make a written request to the Treasurer's office one week in advance of the Board meeting to speak for up to ten minutes. Each meeting participant will be invited to speak directly to the Board so that their remarks may be clearly heard and questions may be asked. In order to assure that the Board is able to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner and to complete its required agenda, the public comment time period of its regular Board meeting shall be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Persons requesting the opportunity to speak shall be called in the order in which their request is received by the Board. Any member of the public who is not able to give their public comments as a result of the maximum public comment time period being reached is invited to submit a request to speak at a subsequent regular Board meeting. So, okay, we should be fine today with times because we did have someone sign up ahead of time for ten minutes, and that is Ms. Jackie Beelow. So if you would like to come up front and just state your name and your address, and you can go, and congratulations on your grandson and your son, Mateo. That's crazy.
He's gonna get faster.
Yes.
Jackie, if you put that closer to you, it's mainly for him. To speak the mic.
Just slide it over.
Yeah. I know it's a little tall. You can move it down. There you go.
Perfect.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Ms. Schloss, and administrators. Today, I would like to address the Board about the passive-aggressive, unprofessional, and disrespectful actions of Athletic Director Heather Beck. On June 1st of 2024, I retired after working thirty-seven years in the Liria School System. Thirty-two of those years were spent as head girls track coach at Liria High School. Though I retired from the school system, I never handed in a resignation for my coaching position. I treated it like I had in previous years per past practice. I made sure that I was current with all of my certifications and requirements as it concerned coaching at any level at any school. The athletic office has all documentation from this. During the time, I have represented the Pioneer family and the community in the highest professional manner. I am fully aware that the supplemental contracts are for one year, and to keep compliance with the EEA, all supplementals must be posted yearly, and if non-certified person holds a position, then a certified person who applies for that position, then the certified person is interviewed and will be considered first. The interview committee must disqualify the certified person in order for them not to get the job. The order of consideration is certified staff than public. Supplemental positions are supposed to be posted at the end of every season. Timing and inconsistency with the posting is the concern I have with Ms. Beck. If Ms. Beck would have posted the job at the time of my retirement or even at the beginning of the school year, I would have never questioned her motive, and I would have been prepared to prepare myself for the future. Ms. Beck's lack of professional courtesy toward me by seemingly intentionally looking for others to apply for the head girls track job by holding off posting was deliberate and disrespectful. Ms. Beck's total lack of communication during this time is inexcusable. After over thirty years of service, I deserve at least this much respect. I actually found out about the opening of the job through a text Heather had sent to another candidate for the job telling this person to make sure that they put in an application so there is a record of interest. I would have, it would have been nice if she would have shared that information with me. Nope, still no communication. I decided to apply online to cover my bases. All of this was very frustrating because both male and female athletes constantly asked me when the track was starting. At the time, they were asking it was past our usual start date. I finally had to tell them that I don't know when track is starting. I think I've been fired. I have heard nothing from the Athletic Director, so that's the only thing I can think of. This was extremely embarrassing. I was denied the opportunity to address my team if this was her intent at the school for past practice as they did with the football program, to let them know that I would not be returning. This insinuates to me that the track program is not important. By playing an unfair waiting game, she denied me the opportunity to earn money, money that I depend on. I could have easily applied for another coaching job somewhere else. In fact, I had been offered a non-sports-related full-time position in Lorraine, but I turned it down because I would not be able to get back to Liria in time to coach. With the money I would have made from the full-time job would have offset anything that I was losing in my coaching supplemental. Never before this year has the indoor track coaching job been posted. Another inconsistency of hers. Because of her waiting to name a coach, a whole season was lost, a season athletes use to prepare for the outdoor season. I had a promising young quarter-miler who had the talent and was hoping to qualify for the indoor state meet. This senior was hoping to use indoor track to get her notice by college scouts and possibly to get a scholarship offer. No season for her. I tried to make sense of all of this. I asked myself, did she have someone who could match my qualifications? In my tenure, I have had a state championship team, a state runner-up team, a fourth-place state team, and I've had many, many state qualifiers in both individuals and relays. I was Ohio Coach of the Year and served four years as All-Star Sprint Coach for Team Ohio for the Midwest Meet of Champions. We won't even address my personal accolades. Could it have been poor evaluation? No. Because you see, I have never seen, I have never received an end-of-the-season evaluation from Heather, ever. My middle school principals gave evaluations for basketball every year. The only conclusion I can come to with all of this for the unprofessional behavior is that she made it personal. Last year about this time, one of my athletes, who had been with me for six years, asked me if I would come and just be there while she spoke to the Board of Education. I sat with her. She spoke, and then we left. The next day, Heather let me know that although I did nothing wrong, it made Coach Brown look bad, and now he doesn't know if he can work with me. What? We're all professionals here, was my response. Of course I can work with anybody. I would never apologize for giving support and telling my young athlete that I would be there for them. I am their safe space. I strive to be the type of mentor that I wanted when I was in high school. The second motive might have been that I had called her out on her treatment of my grandson Mateo Medina. As a junior, Mateo placed fourth in the state in the 200 meters and earned all Ohio status. He was recognized by OSHA, Ohio Athletic, Ohio High School Athletic Association, and even by our own Board of Education. This accomplishment is especially special in track and wrestling because you have to actually make it to the state meet and place in the top eight. After we went to state this year, fast forward to the spring, and Mateo was triple crown winner, one of the first things he asked me was, do you think she'll put me on the wall now? Because she had told him that he had to be state champion to get up there. To this day, I have never seen any criteria in writing. Actually, one of the first things she said, he was so emotional about it because it meant more to him because it was with his buddy Isaiah. Isaiah and him grew up together. They were like brothers. And when it finally did happen, which I will get to, they both cried. Now it's November, and the grandmother in me has come out because there's still no picture of Mateo in the Hall of Fame at Liria High School. Why should I have to fight for something that this young man has earned? He wanted that spot right next to his brother. But Heather again said, no. The senior track picture was finally used by the athletic department, but that was only after I had to contact Heather's supervisor. We have had no contact with Heather since May. All other athletes for all Ohio have their picture placed on the wall within a week. Why take this out on a child? Finally, the ring ceremony. After no communication about if there was even going to be a ring ceremony, I was concerned because my girls, when they were state champions, received their rings in the fall. The winner made sense, so I didn't think much of it, but there was still no communication, nothing. Well, then in late November, I reached out to his coach, and I asked him if anything was planned. Mr. Chismar said he did not know. He would have to ask Heather. And her response was that the boys' basketball team have a home game in December. Maybe we can do it then. Still no communication with the family from the athletic department. They never even sized Mateo for a ring. The celebration itself was a mystery. You would think that a responsible individual would contact his mother at least to see if the date was good or the time was good, whatever the time was. I actually found out about-
The ten minutes is up, so if you can just finish your thought.
Excuse me?
The ten minutes, the ten-minute time.
Okay, I'm almost done. Okay?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine. That's, I mean, is everyone good?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good with your finishing.
I'm good. I want to hear.
I just had to wait.
Go ahead.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
Yep, just go finish.
Okay, yeah, I'm almost done. I actually found out about the plans from a Pioneer Board member who had mentioned in passing that her husband Greg was going, was excited about giving Mateo his ring. It is my opinion that because of the way Heather feels about me, she took it out on my family and caused me to lose income. She never even informed me that I should apply. I found out about reapplying the day before the January 10th deadline. On January 30th was the first day Heather reached out to me at all through email and asked if I was interested in a position. After much thought, I decided that Heather had created such a hostile work environment, and it would not be in my best interest to pursue any position under her watch. On February 3rd, I emailed Heather to inform her that I would not be interviewing. All I wanted was to be treated with respect that I have earned, and with dignity. I know my worth. I have my voice, and I have no one's second thought. These are the keys to the stadium, and error has ended, and it didn't have to. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Are you okay to answer questions, Ms. Beelow? Or is it okay that we ask questions?
Is it? No, we do sometimes. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, just for clarification here. You didn't know about the, I was listening, I was trying to listen intensely, but I was trying to research something at the same time. You said that of thirty-four years, you had never applied because you were an employee. Is that correct? Before, I'm talking before. You never applied before. So you were not aware that because you were retiring, that you needed to apply now for the position? Is that, I just want to make sure I'm understanding exactly what you said.
This is in the spring, so, and the supplemental are supposed to, and this is back in, and this is sports and anything, at the end of the season or end of the, the end of the contract period, you know, gets posted. So I understand the summer, you know, we all had a crazy summer celebrating Mateo's success and everything. So I didn't think much of it. And then in the fall, again, I didn't think much of it because usually about October, we get together and we start talking about the schedule for the year and everything else, but, you know.
And was this for indoor track or spring track?
This was for spring track and, track and indoor track go hand in hand.
Okay.
Okay. And we usually, the season for indoor track is in November.
Oh, okay.
Always has been, you know, as a sign. That's when we start conditioning. The actual season, if you look at the contract, I believe, is like January 1st.
So we didn't have one?
We started working with the kids a couple days a week. And the only way we can do that is they have a, the Board has assigned a coach, the Board approved, so.
So there was no indoor track this year?
Not to my knowledge. And that position, after, has never been posted ever, so.
Not even while you were there, that position was not normally posted?
Yes, it's been posted. It's just another inconsistency, you know, I don't know. I guess I have no answers. I did not know even about, and I believe it was after, and then it was right before the January 5th Board meeting that I saw that Tony Brown was the girls' indoor track coach. Like, what? You know, okay, what's done is done, you know, I just, I just didn't know why. And I didn't appreciate being a chap in the dark.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we have two more visitors. Looks like Sergeant Harold, and I apologize, I cannot say the last name. Okay, if you'd like to come on up and state your name and your address.
I'm Staff Sergeant.
That's good.
Here, good.
All right, I wasn't sure. Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Staff Sergeant Harold Shire with the Ohio Army National Guard. I'm actually mostly here for clarification on your policy because I had set up a classroom presentation last week with one of the teachers. I, looking at the policy, I understand that it still has to be through the principal's office, and that was not done. I understand that. But then I was informed that they don't do that for recruiters, specifically military recruiters, and they haven't for eight years, even though per the policy, the teachers are allowed to invite us in. So I'm looking for some clarification on why that is.
Do you want me to?
Do you, can you?
So I think you let me in the door that day when I came over. You were talking to the front desk. So what happens first is you call the principal's office, and then they tell you of, you know, either talk to the teacher for the job fair or if you're coming to present to a group or what have you. But the key is that you talk to the building administrator first so that they can guide you in the rest of the process as far as whether or not you can go into individual classes or whether or not you go to lunches or what have you. So the key in all of it is to talk to the building administrator first.
Where I'm trying to understand is specifically says classroom teachers who schedule recruiters' career awareness activities should coordinate these through the principal.
Right.
My understanding of this is they can invite us in.
If they coordinate through the principal.
Ms. Johnson straight up said they can invite anyone in as long as they're not military recruiters.
Okay. I then need to clarify that, okay? And I will look into it if you would. Can you give me your contact information?
I can. I have my missus card. I will.
Oh, that's great. I'll check that with her and make sure that we're on the same page.
I appreciate it.
But the key is that the building administrator is the first point of contact. Whether it's the teacher or you.
Teacher or me?
Yes.
So one of us has to go through.
Yes, and that's the key in that.
That's what I understood through there.
Yes.
I told her, I'm sorry, I thought you had already scheduled through there. That was my mistake.
Sure.
I apologized for that, but then when she continued on and said that they were allowed only two, in there twice a year for lunchrooms, and that is it.
Okay.
And saying-
I will check that for sure.
Anyone else is allowed to be invited in to speak on careers, except military careers, that kind of.
I don't want to say that's true or not true because I don't want to misspeak, but it is my understanding the teacher did not talk to the principal either. So I think that was the whole.
The miscommunication, which I understand, and I have no problem with. Things were not followed correctly.
Sure.
I just-
But I'll clarify the rest of it for you.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
And you'll circle back with that?
I'll let you all know, yes.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have one more speaker. It looks like Randy, and I can't read the last name. So please state your name and address. And, yeah, okay.
Randy Lane.
Lane, okay.
I have 138 Palmily evidence. The reason I'm here is because I have a seventeen-year-old daughter in Liria High. She's been suspended probably seven, eight times this year probably for skipping class. And they suspend her, they suspend her for one day, they suspend her for two days, they suspend her for three days, and they just send her home to me to deal with. She's seventeen years old. There's no, really no way that I can punish her at home because the last time I punished her at home, then I had children services at my house because she got a little. So my thoughts of, I was talking to the principal, which, mind you, he hates following me because I'm very blunt and very outspoken. I run my own business, so I can't stop what I'm doing. My wife works, so we can't stop what we're doing to go pick her up every, it's like every two weeks, she's getting suspended from school. So there's no punishments for these kids, and it's not just my kids. There's a lot of kids in there that gets punished at the same, or they get suspended all the time. Isn't there any other way possible that there could be a different kind of discipline at school that these kids can, like, community service, like, go pick up garbage, something that they, something that they absolutely hate to do? Because when they suspend them, send them to my house, I can't take her phone from her because she watches my daughter. So, so she, if you send her to a room and drown her, what kid don't want to sleep all day? You know, say, she's a seventeen-year-old daughter. She wants to sleep just all day long. She don't do nothing. So there's no punishment. So the only alternative that I have is to pull her out of school. Like, that's where I'm at right now at this point. I'm about to sign her out of school and just let her fail at life. Or the principal said, well, you can go to one of these board meetings and talk to them and see if there's something else. Our hands are tied. This is what we can do. We can suspend her for a day. Or now she's suspended, now she's sitting at my house for five days this time. And she just sitting, she just hangs out in her room and does whatever she wants to do, so there's no punishment. I told him, I'm like, why don't you give them a toothbrush? Give them some cleaning supplies and let them walk around the school and clean for eight hours rather than school. Like, something, there's got to be some other kind of punishment for these kids, not just my kids. There's a bunch of them. All of our friends are the same way. They hang out in the bathrooms, and they don't go to class. They don't do nothing. And then all they do is just call me and say, Mr. Lane, well, she's missed all the classes. She walked out of school the last, that's what she did last time. She walked out of school and just left. Like, so, all right, my hands are tied. I know that other parents' hands are tied, and then we just have to deal with them. So my only option is sign her out of school and let her fail. Or talk to you guys and see, well, I'm her father. I'm giving you permission to punish her a different way. Like, when we was growing up, there was punishments. You didn't dare get punished to get suspended from school because when you got home, you know what the consequences are going to be when you get home. I know I knew, I knew what mine was, and I didn't want to get suspended from school, you know what I'm saying? So now our hands are tied. I've done have children services in my life. So what other kind of punishment can we all come up with for these kids where they don't, like, community service? Pick up garbage. It's cold outside. Make them freeze for a day, you know what I'm saying? Like, something like that to where they don't want to get suspended. Maybe they'll ride in their class or try to do better or something. Instead of suspending them, that's not, that's not a punishment for kids anymore. Suspend them from school. That's not a punishment. And that's all they did. Seven or eight times. It's probably been more than that this year that she's been suspended at school. And I'm sick of it. I'm about to sign her out because I'm sick of talking to the principal. I talk to him at least once a week, probably, maybe twice. I don't want to talk to him anymore.
Can you tell me which principal you're talking about, just so I have?
Team Two Office.
Okay. That's all I need. You're good.
He knows me by, if you ask him, he knows my name, first name.
Sure.
Like, we know each other, like, all the time, once a week, probably, like, so. What other kind of agreement can we come up to with for these kids to where they, they're getting punished. There's not any punishment for this stuff. And then their hands are tied, our hands are tied, and the kids, even the prison system is not a punishment anymore. People love to go to prison because it's free ads in the car, you can have phones and everything. Like, it's, there's no punishments anymore. So there needs to be some kind of a punishment for these kids so they don't end up in prison. Like, or something, you know what I mean? Like, something needs to be done. And I'm her dad. I'm given permission, like, give her something that she don't. Make her go outside and freeze for a little while. Make her freeze her hands and stuff, picking up trash in front of all of her friends. You know what I mean? Like, something, something has to be done besides suspending and sending them home with us. And I told him, send her home, and she's going to sit in her room, and there's no consequences for her. I'm not doing nothing to her. I'm literally not doing nothing. She's got, I got six more months. That's what I keep saying. I got six more months with this one. And they're packing with luggage. And that's not right, but that's the true, it's a true story, like.
Okay. Guess, I don't, I don't know what can be done right now, but.
I know they've, they've put some new skipping programs into place, but it's somewhat progressive, but I will look into it.
And then that punishes the, like, so last year, she got suspended for taking marijuana to school. So they put her in whatever that was, the, the Canna thing or whatever.
Yes.
So what that did with that was, that didn't only punish her, I had to go sit with her for seven classes. I had to go too. So I got punished. I run a business. I don't have time to be going to sit. I did. But I didn't, why I get punished because of what she did. Give her some kind of punishment. Clear the D H or something, or something. Give her some kind of punishment, clear the age or something or something, but there's nothing like that. There's no consequences for their actions anymore. And I think it's bull crap. Like something needs to be done.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments? Thank you then. Thank you, Mr. Lane.
The only option is just sign her out of school and then just call it good, right? Pretty much.
I mean, I, I don't know right now.
I'm going to make a call and I will be in touch with you.
There's going to be some options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item E, the board, the meeting minutes from our last meeting have been posted.
We have our president, are we still going to do the presentation?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, came in.
I've asked Donna Andrews, our attorney, to come and just speak for a few minutes on athletics and contract language.
Yes, okay.
Just so you knew, Elaine, you, or Sigwin, you asked for clarification on that, so I did ask.
Okay, yeah.
Donna, since she was going to be here for our executive session.
Those are for the high sc-?
The high school. Donna, if you could just let them know about the ORC and the CBA language.
Yeah, that's what I have in mind.
Yeah.
So we, Ohio Revised Code addresses supplemental contracts, really specifically special instruction departments in schools, pupil activity programs, basically, is how it's described in the Ohio Revised Code. It specifically speaks to the fact that certified employees in school districts and businesses all across the state are given preference under the law for receiving supplemental contracts. Now, they're called supplemental contracts in collective bargaining agreements because certified employees, teachers who have regular employment contracts, they get an opportunity to have what's called supplemental contract, which is an additional contract for the various activities that you have in your district, whether it is sports or other extraprejudicial programs like clubs and a variety of other things for students that require the certification. If an employee has a certificate or a license for teaching, then they don't require what's also known as a pupil activity permit, which is what somebody who is a non-certified employee would have. And the preference over the years was given to these, the licensed and certificated employees in districts because they work with the kids the most, they see them during the day, they interact with them. Coaches are in a good position, if they're also teachers, to see how the kids are during the day, check in with them, know what's going on. But the law also permits non-certificated persons to apply for and receive these positions if there is no certified employee who applies for the position. So that's, that's how it works. Now, it then can fall to the classified employees. Classified employees can apply as long as there are accommodations made for the Fair Labor Standards Act, which sometimes is an impediment because of the number of hours a week. They're not salaried employees, they're hourly employees, classified employees. So if they're hourly employees and they also are working as coaches, it is not unusual for them to exceed forty hours in a week and enter an overtime status. So that's another issue in consideration for the classified employees. Now, once a classified or a layperson, somebody from the community, receives a supplemental contract, the law has carved out a special exception for them. In that, as long as they remain employed in the district, the classified employees, they can continue to have their contracts renewed year after year. Basically, that is the legendary basketball coach exception, all right? Now, what do I mean by that? So a few years ago, this provision in the law did not exist. And a legendary beloved basketball coach somewhere in the state of Ohio had worked in the district for many years, had several championships on Roosevelt. And a new teacher was hired in the district, and the new teacher came and said, I want the position. And usually, under the law as it had been, the law would require that the district that posts the positions every year would then award the position to the certified employee. So then the law, there was a lot of unrest and unhappiness in that community because of that, and so they carved it out. But the employee has to remain employed from year to year in order to, in order to receive that, that exception. The collective bargaining agreement addresses the process for supplemental contracts, including evaluation and things like that. That's covered in the collective bargaining agreement for supplemental contracts for the teachers. But the classified contract, the collective bargaining agreement for classified employees does not address supplemental contracts the same way the teachers' contract does. It doesn't have the list of the contracts and the amount to be paid and things like that. So my guess is you guys have actual questions about supplemental contracts? If I can answer any for you, I'd be happy.
I have a question. Just using the scenario that you just gave regarding the, you know, the beloved coach as opposed to the new teacher, or the new certified employee who comes in. So you said that he, that person would have to remain employed in order to keep the, the coaching status.
Well, not in that circumstance, that's how, there's two different categories. There's a bucket of those who are employed in the district and those who are not employed. So somebody who works in the community in some other position outside the school district entirely. Yeah, that is the category, the bucket that that is contained, where they are employed outside the district and they continue to receive the position year after year until they depart.
Even though classified staff wanted it?
Certified.
Or certified, I'm sorry.
That is correct, yes, even though a certified person wanted it. That is correct, yeah.
And that person, but that still didn't answer my question.
In this situation, my understanding is she was employed, she retired and separated employment. So she would have had to have applied when the position was issued.
Do positions need posted every year even if a certified?
That is under the certified.
Coach wants them?
Yes.
They still need posted? Publicly posted, like on our website?
It's the posting that's required under the collective bargaining agreement. It's how it's posted, website, I don't know if it's in buildings, is it inside of buildings also, right?
It gets posted online?
Online, yeah.
Right.
Every coaching job, I'm just talking coaching, I know there's others.
It's supposed to be posted every season.
And then if a, in general, if a certified employee wants it, they trump everyone else?
Correct.
They can be disqualified.
They can be, yeah, they can be disqualified if they have no experience in the position or it gets, it becomes a little bit of a sticky wicket if you have two categories of experience. You know, one person is coached in, say, some lower grades and one person is coached in upper grades. So the question is qualifications and, you know, there, there can be some battles over that quite frankly as to what qualified means because qualified is not defined.
And after a season, this has always been unclear to me as well, and people have asked, is there supposed to be an evaluation of the coach or by the athletic director?
Yes.
Everybody, everybody.
That's, that's what the contract says.
Every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if this happens, but if someone goes from certified to classified, are they still, like, do they have to reapply? Like, because you're, let's say you're certified, you're a teacher, and then you, for whatever reason, become a classified staff member, do you still hold that protection as if you were, so you have to reapply?
No, you would not. It depends on if you already have the job.
You're already coaching.
If you renew, yeah.
Okay. Because you still work for the district.
Right.
Do you have other questions?
I got a whole lot of questions. We'll have enough time.
Yeah. Anyone else or?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, Donna. Okay, moving along, the meeting minutes have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? If none, Madam Treasurer, please call the roll. Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Sigwin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Board of Education items. I don't think we have anything, so moving along. Treasurer, action?
I don't have any action items or any other items, but I do have a report for you guys this time. So I know this is exciting. Thank you all for staying. I will make it short and sweet. But I have had some, I've been receiving some questions about the property tax reappraisal and school funding and the impact, what it has on local schools. So I kind of wanted to do like a quick report to hopefully answer some of these questions. And then I also gave out a PowerPoint to the board just because it's, some might say it's dry information, but I don't think so. All right, so the common questions I have are how property tax reappraisals impact school funding and the effect of increasing home values on tax rates.
I have it memorized.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go right into it. Property values and school funding. The age-old question is what is the twenty mil floor, when we talk about the twenty mil floor? All the twenty mil floor is, is a rule ensuring that all school districts collect at least twenty mils, which is two percent of the property value. So when your property tax, when your property value increases, in order for your property taxes not to increase, your valuation goes down. So schools get the same amount, the taxpayer does not have to pay more. It benefits the taxpayer because they don't have to pay more, but it does not benefit the school because they don't get the inflationary rate on that. Well, at some point, every time your values go up and the rate goes down, back in nineteen seventy-six, they decided, hey, the twenty mil floor, we're going to cap you where you can't go any lower. So if the school district, school district hits the twenty mil floor, when your property value goes up, you can't go down anymore, so school districts will see some of that inflationary growth. So that's all that means when we talk about the twenty mil floor. So higher property values decrease tax rates until you hit the twenty mil floor. Schools don't see revenues growth until the floor is reached. And Elyria has reached the floor for residential properties, and I believe it was twenty twenty, but don't quote me on that, but they have not reached the floor yet for the commercial properties, so those still get rolled back. All right, planning for reappraisals. So reappraisals happen on the current cycles. They happen every three years for triennial updates, and they also happen every six years where they go out and actually like survey homes. Schools factors these trends in their financial forecast, so we all know when every three years, every six years, that they're coming. So the latest reappraisal resulted in an increase of local funding because we're on the floor. There was already projected into the forecast, just like they have for twenty twenty-seven. There's also the, the triennial coming up, and then that increases also already into the forecast. And how do I get those numbers? I work really well, the county auditor, I have to give him props. He's really great with communicating and talking to the districts and letting us know where the reappraisals are at and what to project moving forward. All right, so what does that mean though for the local taxpayer? So shifting the burden, local versus state. As local property values increase, state funding decreases. Federal funding is also in decline while inflation increases cost. And the financial responsibility is shifted from the state to the local taxpayers. So unfortunately, what does that mean? The taxpayers pay a little bit more, we receive a little bit more, but it's not with a one-to-one rate of inflation, but is also in the forecast and is projected. But as local funding goes up, state funding goes down. So as an example, in my, I brought a little chart with numbers. I would never suggest to look at the last year of the forecast. There's a lot going on between now and then. There's two governor budgets that I, I don't know what's going to happen. But just for purposes of trying to explain it, if everything remained constant in fiscal year twenty twenty-nine, the property tax owners as a whole will be paying approximately nine hundred thousand more. And the state aid that we're receiving from the state is, goes down one point eight million. So we actually are netting of a negative nine hundred and twenty-one thousand. So what does that mean? Property tax owners, local taxes pay more, the school district actually nuts out and gets less. So we have to put on a new levy, which hurts the taxpayers more. So that is not a good cycle. So we are advocating for the schools and for the fair school funding. Treasurers and superintendents are lobbying for updates to state funding. The goal is to adjust the fair school funding formula for inflation. Without these adjustments, the local taxpayers bear most of the burden. So the school districts, the treasurers were lobbying on your behalf to fix the fair school, to fix the funding, but also to make it fair and to not put the burden on the local taxpayers. Because if we don't have enough money, schools may need then to turn to levies for additional funding. And to kind of sum it up, property tax reappraisals impact schools' funding significantly. They shift responsibilities between the state and the local taxpayers. Advocacy is essential to ensure fair funding policy, and the overall goal is to minimize the financial strain while supporting the school districts. So that was my mini-report, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we do not have superintendent action items or other, so personnel action items.
All right. All right, first of all, this is just a correction. As you know, SDRS changed their years of retirement, so one of our employees that was going to resign is actually able to retire, so that's awesome. And he has, he has been with the district for twenty-five years, so we thank him. And then you'll see the new date to approve the retirement date for this employee. Also, to approve the retirement for this classified staff member. Maria has been with us for eleven years. I know she's been a big part of the, the village staff, and we wish her well come June. Also, to approve the appointment of the following class, classified staff members as listed below. To approve the resignation of classified staff as described below. To approve the relief from employment duties during a probation period for the following staff member. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff member. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff member. Then we have to approve the following athletic supplemental contracts as listed below. And as you can see, we have some spring. It's, but the groundhog says we still have six weeks of winter, right? And that concludes my personnel action items.
I'm sorry, Ann.
I think I know what Ms. Karstoffen is asking, and so what you would do is you would say, I make a motion to approve carving out, am I correct there?
That's exactly what I said.
Yep. The one indoor track supplemental, am I correct? Okay, so you would say that, am I correct, Howard?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items, carving out the indoor Ted Girls Track Coach?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
So we're carving it out.
For tonight, yes.
One second.
Any questions?
Who was the second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Mike, you're second.
Mike?
Yeah, Mike did.
Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sigwin? Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, do you have any report?
Yes, I have just a few things. First of all, we'll, we'll report on this when we give a presentation soon, as soon as it's official official. But three of our buildings came out of school improvement due to the increases in some of the data. But we want to wait until we get the official, like, notice, but we did get an email. So I, that's wonderful. I believe it was Westwood Elementary, Ely Elementary, and Hamilton Elementary. So very proud of that work. Also, remind you, next board meeting, we're at the J V S, and I will send an email out or a text just to tell you exactly where to go in and everything. I know they're planning on offering a tour, and they are going to have some refreshments and stuff for us. Also, Tuesday, the 11th, we have a very unique but very cool event going on over at Eastern Heights. Our seventh-grade boys' basketball team is going to play, and by the way, they are quite good. And they're going to have what's called a fifth quarter so that the unified team can come and play as well, which is a really cool thing. And more to come. I'll make sure you get an email on that, but I just wanted to let you know in case you want to put it on your calendar now.
February?
It's next, this coming Tuesday.
2/11.
Yeah.
At Eastern Heights?
At Eastern Heights, I believe, I hope. Yes, I'll for sure to send you, but I believe it is Eastern Heights. Also, this past Friday, we had professional development day, and as always, kudos to academic services, pupil services, operations, human research. I think every department did a little bit of professional development, but I know initially academic services and pupils, or student services meet a lot to make sure we're doing a good job of providing our staff with extra professional development, and we heard a lot of wonderful feedback, and we do do evaluations that gives us the feedback so that we can do even better the next time. So kudos to those, those that were involved in creating that. Also, last night, I made the trip over to Avon Lake. Mr. Larrick got his 217th win, which put him as the winningest basketball coach in Alaria history, pioneer history. So kudos to him. Also, our cheer squad made it to state, and our girls' wrestling team made it to state. So lots to be very proud of, but a lot of good things going on. And just watch Twitter and Facebook. We try to put it out and make sure that we, we do a good job. And last but not least, I save the best for last, as promised. We were, we were a little delayed, but board appreciation. I tell, I tell everyone how fortunate we all are, but I'll speak for myself as well, to have such a hard-working board and a board that wants to be involved and cares about the district. So we thank you. You have some goodies, chocolate. Make sure Parker and Gebhardt and Hauser share it with your wives. Annie and Elaine, you get it all, right? Yeah. But also, several of the, the school buildings did create cards. You have some of those. And I know there's a video in your email that one of the, one of the, I think it was Northwood Elementary and Middle School made for you. But they all had a lot of fun doing that, and again, we do appreciate everything you do for, for the students and the staff in Alaria City Schools. So thank you.
Thank you.
And your shirts are here but being embroidered.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we do not have any Board of Education items today.
And do you know, on this weekend, there's a ROTC thing? Do you know, I tried to ask on Facebook what time it started?
I will.
This is all day.
Okay. I will find out the start time and text you.
Okay.
What time?
I know it starts in the morning.
Yeah.
I know what time.
It's usually pretty early, but I will, I will.
It's like, I should know.
Oh, 600, is that how you say it in the military time, right? I don't know what time that is.
Someone said, oh, dark 30.
There's a play on the 14th.
Six o'clock in the morning.
Oh, okay, there's a play on the 14th also, 15th and, the whole weekend?
Yeah.
Somehow I missed that. I'm sorry. Which play is it again?
August 12.
Okay, thank you, thank you. See, you have to keep me honest here. I tried to, all-encompassing, but I do miss things. Also, Mrs. Sigwin, we are adding one more executive session so we can have discussions around some of the conversation tonight. So there's the one that's on there, and then.
I'll read it when she goes.
She'll read it for you, the other one, so that we can have.
Yeah, because this doesn't say.
Yeah, there is one.
Yeah.
It's.
It's required to keep confidential. Yeah, it doesn't say that on mine.
On page eight, the one that says to request executive session for the purpose of matters required to keep confidential.
Doesn't say that, does it? I don't see.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. Okay.
It's okay, it's very short, so that one doesn't stick out.
Okay, I'm used to, like, a little paragraph.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, okay. So we do have an executive session. Hold on, let me get back to it.
I think she just read it.
Yeah, you just read it, but to request an executive session for the purpose of matters required to be kept confidential as provided in Revised Code 570940 to 570943.
And to consider the appointment of a, employment of a public employee under High Revised Code 121 point something, something.
Yeah.
All right.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll. I don't know. Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mrs. Sigwin?
Aye.
Okay, we will meet in executive session.